Good evening and welcome to the August 26th meeting of the Belavista City Council. Will you please rise and join us for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all
We'll do the roll call of council. Councilmember Wasniak?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Burke?
Here.
Wilms?
Here.
On present.
Okay, first item is citizen input. This is a time for you to speak to us. It's not a debating thing, but I'll be calling you each up. Those of you that have signed here, you'll have three minutes. Then the council, in a change in the agenda as a result of some rule changes we have done, will then respond. Again, it won't be a debate, but an opportunity for them to answer individually on their own behalf as opposed to speaking on behalf of council. And then if you want to continue the conversation after, then we'll all be here as well. So we'll begin first with Mr. Fulberson.
This is my second time here on the same problem. This is my second time here on the same problem. Parking my truck on my gravel in my yard. I shouldn't have any problem with it. I should be established there. It's been there since 2003, my truck and my yard. I should be grandfathered in. And I keep getting these things from Cheyenne.
Go through.
Why do I? Last time I was here, I thought it was all clear and could be complete. Now I'm back again. Am I going to be doing this every month?
Doug, are you able to meet with Mr. Fulberson, please?
I can, please.
Cheyenne's boss is right back there. Doug, you want to hold your hand up, Doug?
Okay. We'll talk to him. But I should be established. It's been there since 2003. My truck isn't bothering anybody. Nobody's bothering my truck. It's on three inches of gravel. It's fine, as far as I know.
Okay.
I have no problems with it. I think that, I hope that's the last of it.
I'll let you meet with Doug and I'll follow up with him as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Comment?
We're going to comment in the next section.
That microphone's not working. Did you turn it off?
It's on.
Turn on the volume.
He just wasn't talking.
Wow, it's not about you.
Is my mouth big enough?
It seems to be.
Testing, testing.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Do it again?
No.
All right, Mr. Gilman, you're up.
I have to say my address.
Are you living at 36?
Living at 36 Kirk County Drive.
Great, thank you.
My name is Dan Gilman. And I was expecting five other people to be here tonight. They didn't show and I was wondering if I could have their 15 minutes.
That's a good try, though.
But anyway, I became aware of our burning policy sort of the hard way, I think. My wife is, you know, she's reading on the porch. She comes in the house and tells about this ash that's in the air. So I go out and sure, there's our ash. And I don't really know the source of the ash, if it was the wood being burned itself or a starker. Anyway.
This is from the burning of logs on the adjoining lot that's being built, if I remember correctly. Is that correct?
Yes, I contacted you.
Right, and I think you've spoken to Chief Sims as well.
I've heard Chief Sims as well. And of course, it's the smoke in the air, I guess, just like those people from the stump dump experience. And it's putrid, acrid, whatever you want to say. I looked it up and there is, there are pollutants associated with smoke that aren't healthy. Green wood. This is what we're burning. We're burning generally green wood. And I know coming from Wisconsin that we don't burn green wood, especially near fire I called the dispatch. I called them previous to today. And I really don't like the way they do this. I don't really know exactly how they do it, but I don't, just from what I was told, I don't think it's a good way to do it. In other words, somebody calls apparently for a permit and they're granted a permit just based on that call. In other words, she said there are parameters, you know, they have to be at the fire, they have to have a water source, et cetera. Well, because I became aware of this, as I mentioned, it was in my neighborhood. And I know, I saw the lot being cleared. And it's a deep lot, probably as long as a football field, bigger than that. And heavily wooded, so you can amount of slashes and logs and whatever. And this person was attempting to burn it. If you looked at it today, you wouldn't even know it had burned anything because he's burning green wood. It smolders. It just smolders. So I went down and I had words with him after I had contacted everybody. I wish I hadn't, but he was not there. He was not attending that fire. And it was, I couldn't see any flames, but it was smoldering pretty good. Okay. That's my beef about your policy for burning. I called the dispatch and much, I could not believe this. I don't know, you want to play a little guessing game? How many permits have been issued since January 1st? 2,235.
I don't think it's permit so much. Chief, isn't it they call in to determine if there's a burn ban?
That's correct.
And then if there's no burn ban, then we ask them to give us the address? Okay.
Well, that might be the case.
Sure, that's okay. Just wanted to make sure.
But I don't think that's a good way to address this. They keep a log. And they have no idea what is, where the, I mean, they might know the address, but they don't know the amount. They don't know the person's skill at burning. I don't want somebody burning that amount of wood. I don't want their ash on my property. And your policy allows debris from his fire to land on my property. Okay? I wasn't going to get huffy about this, but, okay.
I think we're just about out of time, Dan, so.
Okay, can I just say one more thing?
Please do, yep.
Please, thank you. All right, I'm talking to Mayor Christie and I also talked to Tom Cusson. And both of them told me there's this plan for something in economy. Well, Rogers was mentioned. And I'm thinking about this. Where in the world would Rogers, unless they have something like Bentonville in mind? And if it's, we're talking about distance here, falling distance. Also, I slipped my mind. Well, anyway, I think that should be taken into consideration because we have plenty of area here. We're much bigger than Rogers and much bigger than Bentonville. And I called the street department and we have a chipper. And I would suggest that you go online and look at these commercial chippers they have. Our chipper, the guy told me, takes an 18-inch diameter log. Well, they have chippers that will take much more than that available. And I don't know if there's any call for this, the chips are not, you know, commercially or anything, but I'd like you to reconsider this burning policy because I think it's inconsiderate of neighbors breathing in that smoke, et cetera. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. That ends the citizen input, council. If you don't mind, I'll kick it off in response to Dan's. Yes, there is indeed plans afoot by the Benton County Solid Waste Management and the city of Rogers to put together a mulching, composting operation. All the necessary documents have been filed with ADEQ and they are now waiting for it to come back. It's going to be a very large operation. It'll be bigger than Bentonville's. Bentonville, as some of you have already known, has now turned off the spigot for any of the other cities to bring in their stuff. And I suspect in the not-too-distant future, they're going to have to turn off their own spigot to their own residences and that's why we're working to try and get this regional one going. Chippers? Yeah, we have a chipper and we use it when we're clearing along the roads. And after the stump dump problem, and of course, that doesn't exist anymore here, we too are feeling the pain. We at one point had 125 truckloads of chips that we couldn't get rid of. If we were to take it to the Tawny Town Dump, the tipping fee was $150 a load. Now, we did try and find a commercial use for it, thinking that perhaps they could dry it out and the chicken farmers could use it, but because it's primarily oak, the chicken farmers won't touch it, they want pine. Now, we have offered free mulch, as much as you can possibly carry to all the residents. And we have been able to decrease the number of truckloads down to about 50. But we are feeling the pain as well, Dan, so I understand. As far as the smoke is concerned, I'll talk to both Director Tapp and Chief Sims about this and see what we can do. I can tell you that typically the builders do burn on the lot. They don't haul it away. And we have had a few calls, Chief, if I remember, where there has been smoke and ash and we've had to go out. So we'll talk about that as well. So thanks for bringing it up again, Dan. I appreciate it. All righty.
Can I, can I, I think another gentleman came in for public comment. You missed the sign up, Chief. Is it all right if he comes up?
Scott?
I mean.
Sure, sure. Come on up, Scott.
I apologize. I had business I had to take care of, so. Now, for lumber's sake. Scott, you missed the other 10 kilo and drive. I feel a great deal of empathy, if not sympathy, as I was a city council member in Bentonville for 11 years. And I know about your trials and tribulations and I wanted to visit with you a minute regarding this opportunity to buy a water line. And I'm looking at it from 30,000 feet. I'm looking at it big picture, long term. But I, anecdotally, as somebody on the Bentonville City Council, every time we purchased a utility of any kind that allowed us to exercise territorial clout, we did it and we never really ever regret it. It didn't always fit our need at that point in time, but it did wind up allowing us to annex property, to do things, to increase our commercial retail areas. At times, it should have gone to other towns, other cities. We were able to use that and parlay that into that kind of enterprise, which allowed us, quite frankly, to increase our tax revenue throughout, vis-à-vis sales tax. The Sam's Club, supposed to be in Rogers, it's in Bentonville. Anything south of 102, Neighborhood Market, supposed to be in Rogers, it's in Bentonville. Because we were able to get utilities to that area sooner. As I said, I don't know your particular set of circumstances. Okay, I'm not here, I'm not an expert on that, but I think, you know, I think there's an opportunity here for Belavista, big picture, long term, to be able to purchase this and if it's managed properly, it becomes more than just a way to deliver a commodity. It becomes, quite frankly, a tool to increase the size of the city, the city, that is nothing else, and allow you, I think, and the city council to increase the retail footprint here in Belavista. And I think they're an opportunity, particularly, Belavista has a lot of things going for it. One of it, believe it or not, is it has a POA. One thing we detested in Bentonville at times was dealing with the recreational department. We detested that. We had too many headaches in our program for that. You don't have to deal with that here. You don't have to deal with electrical utilities, electrical outages. You have, Belavista has a lot going for it and it has I-49. And that's going to get developed one way or another. And I hope you folks can see into the future, and I'm sure you can, through planning, et cetera, to where that can be advantageous to the people of Belavista. Where people come in here, they spend their money, they get back on the highway, they leave. Instead of Belavistans going into Bentonville or to Jay, Missouri, or wherever, and spend their money and then come back. That's the only point I wanted to make.
Good. Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're entering into the council reply. And again, it'll be the same kind of format. And they are speaking on behalf of themselves, not necessarily speaking on behalf of council. And it gives them an opportunity to reply. This is something that we haven't had in the past and we're kicking it off tonight. So why don't we just start at one end?
Reference to parking on the gravel. He was here long before we made that rule. He shouldn't be grandfathered in. If he ever sells that, then I'm sure we can go after whosoever next, as we do the other.
It's not the law.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, he should be grandfathered in. We shouldn't be able to go back after the fact. And if he's been there as long as he says and he has, and we've been incorporated since '07, why are we now just catching up with it? You know, that's a little bit weird if it took that long to go ahead and correct this. And if you go by his house and see what he's got, you wouldn't have a problem with it at all. You put SB2 down and after a while, it looks pretty bad and then you've got to do it again. What he's got is gorgeous. Anybody here would be more than proud of the yard that man's got, and the way he keeps it up. And because he's been here long before the fact, he shouldn't be made to go back and do something else. That's my opinion.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Larry, anything?
I guess my, my comment would be is that we might want to revisit the policy that says you're not allowed to park a vehicle or trailer or other thing on the decorative stone, which is what I believe Mr. Fulberson has. And whether that is still a valid policy or there may be nuances to that that might permit its acceptability in one instance, but maybe not in another instance, I don't know if that's possible, but it might be possible.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Linda?
I did previously, after the gentleman was here the last time, have a discussion with Doug Tapp about why this was not grandfathered in because my understanding was any practice that was documented before we were a city would be grandfathered. And it was explained to me that that particular instance was not grandfathered. So I'm a little confused about why not and what is and what isn't. Thank you.
I'll be happy to explain all this to you in a work session, but this is something we dealt with 11 years ago in depth and addressed it. So I'll, but tonight, I can't do it.
Okay, we'll do it. The work session coming up, Dan?
Yeah, so I want to understand it too. I want, the issue is whether he can park where he's parking. The issue is what type of rock he's parking on, right? Because I did actually drive by and see where he has parked and he does have a large property. But making comment about whether it should be SB2, decorative rock, I really, you know, that was something I wasn't aware of before I came here. I just know what SB2 is supposed to compact better and make a better base or something like that. But anyway, it's not about whether he can park, it's about what type of rock he's parking on.
John?
The only comment I had is I do think this is something that might be interesting for us to look into about the smoke. You know, very early on, when the stump dump situation came up, a bunch of folks from the state came and there was a meeting at Metfield. And everybody was focused on a lot of other things, so they, I think a lot of people didn't even notice this comment. One of the state agency had said, if it's up to me, there wouldn't be any burning allowed. And burning is pollution. I just thought that was interesting that, you know, there's a lot of different views on that and certainly smoke can be very obnoxious.
Thank you, John. Steve?
Mayor Christie, just want to mark this occasion for our first opportunity for city council to reply to public input. I had, before I was seated on the city council, I had attended several city council meetings, some of those where it was obvious that the people providing input and the people who attended the meeting felt like it would be appropriate for there to be a city council response. And after the meetings, when I checked to see, why didn't anybody feel compelled to respond, what I learned was it was against the rules. And in fact, not only was it against the rules, it was against the law because the rules for our meetings have been placed into our city ordinances. And so tonight, we begin this process. We changed that rule that allows city council to respond to public input. It may be something that is useful going forward. There may be times where we don't feel compelled to reply. A lot of times, as you pointed out, when we do reply, we're speaking for ourselves, not speaking for the entirety of the city council. But I think it makes us a more engaged, more responsive city council, and I'm glad we have that. I look forward to the other business on our agenda today, where we're going to contemplate moving the rest of our meeting rules out of city ordinances, just adopt them as rules. That way, if we decide we want to tweak something, we want to make a change in how we conduct these meetings going forward, that we would be able to do that without having to change an ordinance and wait 60 days for that to go into effect. Thank you.
Thank you. And what he's alluding to on your agenda, on your new business, is A, which is an ordinance, and item C, which is a resolution. And we'll be getting there. Okay, anybody else? Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have two. I'm going to bundle them into one motion for the June 24th city council meeting and then the July 22nd council meeting, which was probably the shortest council meeting we've ever had because we didn't have a quorum. But nevertheless, there were minutes attached to that as well. Is there any discussion about them? Seeing that it entertained a motion to approve both sets of minutes within one motion.
The only comment, Mayor, that I would have is that there are a couple of words that are inappropriate to be used. As an example, it might, the word might likely have been "thing" in its "think" or something like that is in its place. So it might be just a spell checking error.
Okay, we have the bill, we'll go back and change it. It's typo. Anybody else? Any motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, excuse me, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Wilms?
Aye.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Kerry?
Thank you. Hopefully, you had a chance to see the June financial reports. We continue to be in very good shape. Our reserves are well over 55% of the unrestricted revenue. However, there will be some charges coming in now as we get through the paving season. And I sent you out the tax documents today for the month of July. We're well ahead of last year. We're still shy on the budget comparison. However, of course, the new growth that we've been seeing in the homes over the last few years has increased the property tax, which has more than covered the shortfall. Any questions or discussions, or if you do, you could pop in and see Kerry and she can take you through it?
I just have one question. So reserves right now are like reflecting like $8.8 million typically for the last couple of years and even up till recently, it was like more like 7.7, 7.8. So that's probably not really a true reserve number. What about some of the capital improvement money that's going to be allocated for this year?
That's true.
Know about what that number might be?
It'll probably drop down to about 6.4. That's what I'm anticipating because there's trail stuff in there, too.
Yeah, because we allocate an extra million dollars a year for streets.
For streets as well, yep. Okay. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So move.
Okay. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Kerry, six zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to all business. The first is a resolution that was tabled from the June meeting, expressing the intent of the city council no longer to purchase of a portion of the Centerton Water System in accordance with the memorandum of understanding currently in place between the parties. Discussion?
I would just like to do one thing real quickly. And I'll just say upfront, just so people don't make any nerves on the council here. We had a really robust conversation about this at the work session last Monday, about hours worth of conversation. Lot of back and forth, lot of input from everyone. The only thing I would like to do, I have a map here and I'm just going to very briefly just kind of outline what this water purchase looks like to us from the city of Centerton, just for reference. May I, I don't know if I can do both. Hey, you got, turn one of those chairs around. Let me hold it. Oh, here, let me do this. Just going to stop. Just. Do you have that hand mic? It's here. Oh, he put it there. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was to put it around. Okay. Can you hear me? Yep. So real quickly, all I want to highlight is the Centerton Water District, okay? That is in yellow, right here. This is the boundaries of where their water authority is, okay? Right here is Locklomen. Here's Windsor. And this would be the Hawasi area right here. And this is 279 and 72. So the water district or water purchase that we are talking about making is a line that runs up 279, just like this, stops right here, and then it comes over and actually includes this little shopping center area that we're in. And then the line runs on down here, I believe, the fire department is included in that, correct? Number four is included in it down here. So this is the area that we're talking about, okay? Something I want to mention is this is part of the gravel city limit right here. You can see they have annexed basically all the way up to Belavista, okay? Not really necessarily a good thing for us, but that's what they've done. So this is a section, this is what we're talking about right now. The only comment I want to make about it before we start talking about it up here is it is is it isn't necessarily just opportunity in this particular area, but in the future it can open up opportunities for us in other areas of Bella Vista, okay? And I don't want to go into all details of that right now. That really gets too much off into the weeds, but it does. Hopefully tonight, this resolution, I mean, I don't know if we're going to vote on it actually or maybe just move it down for another month or two because of some information that's unfolded, but I just wanted to give people a heads up or perspective on where this is and say it opens up possibilities in other parts of Bella Vista where we could possibly potentially take water to that the POA does not service right now that's outside of the POA boundaries.
Okay, thanks Doug.
One last comment. This is 49 right here, this quarter right here. All I want to say is we have escape routes out of the west area at Highlands and Glasgow, Hawasi Road and 279 for people to real quickly jump on, I-49 eventually, 549 right now and fly right into Bentonville, right into Rogers, Springville, wherever they're going to spend their money and not have to filter back through Bella Vista with the potential to stopping at any of our businesses and spend any money in Bella Vista, which helps us generate sales and use tax revenue, which pays for fire, police, streets, et cetera.
Some of the discussion that we had at the work session included the fact that those water mains start, I believe, as a six inch pipe and work their way down to a two inch pipe to the point that we're entertaining building a police station beside the streets department and we can't sprinkle with water down that pipe. So what we've had to do is gain approval from the POA to bring their water over for the sprinkler only if we build the building. If we get increased retail down there, very little of that line is actually in Bella Vista. Most of it is on the Grabit side. So we would have to do perhaps the annexation type of routine Scott that you mentioned, but we would also have to build that pipe and make it bigger. As you know, our economic base is not big, our commercial base is quite small. That too is a concern. And in a recent survey that was done last fall, our residents said the three things they want us to zero in on are police, fire and streets because we have seen tremendous growth for Bella Vista, tremendous growth in new housing permits over the last four years to the point where the infrastructure is now demanding more services. We've got to watch the roads and we're trying to do that and be fiscally responsible by ensuring that the infrastructure is there. Nobody mentioned in the survey that they wanted us to purchase a water system. Truly, I understand going down and looking into the future that this could definitely be something that would help. We would also have to have sewer down there and one of the disadvantages that we face, and Scott, this was something similar to what you mentioned, is we don't own a sewer company. It's a private company and we would have to convince them that it's a good idea to go down there as well. So there are a lot of challenges facing us. Personally, I'd rather address what the residents want us to do with a little bit of money that we've got. So I approached Centerton last week and asked if their commission would give us the right of first refusal for a negotiated period of time and also guarantee that they would not sell that pipe to Grabit. And they gave it due consideration and said no. And they would expect an answer from the council, from our council as to whether or not we are going to purchase by December. So that was the new information that Doug mentioned just a few minutes ago. Is there other discussion?
Yeah, well, Larry, you want to? Okay, so this is a tough one, you know, it's kind of like where do I start? First of all, I would just like to say that when you do a survey of the residents of any city, and of course, we're in a unique situation here. I don't know how many of them, but like what would come on that purchase of a water department would be a good thing for the city, you know, because it might open up possibilities for commercial retail development in the future, possibly even a small industrial area, something like that. I really don't, I really don't think that that would be probably top of mind just because they're not involved in the city government or they've never had a history of or knowledge So just real quick, just from the brief or the conversation that we had last week, I did get a couple of emails and I'm not going to like reveal people's names right here. I don't think that's necessary and they probably would appreciate it. Here's one. Whereas I do not know all the ins and outs financially impactful and I predict future development along the west corridor with serving for the city of Bella Vista, I'm appreciative of your work toward the purchasing of this water deal from Centerton. My intention is to let you know that I appreciate your work toward looking forward in Bella Vista's future smart growth. Many residents share my thoughts. Then I got a follow-up email, same person. I've done quite a bit of campaigning on this since Monday night and I've been on Facebook and meeting with a few residents who said they didn't understand why would we buy water from Centerton? I guess they didn't understand, so I explained it as best I could and by the time I was finished explaining, they were agreement that we should move ahead with this plan, whatever the next step might be. Got a, got another one. Okay, I got another one, but I'll table that one for right now. So the city's webpage, when we open it up, here's what it says. A 2018 study estimated Bella Vista has a retail market of approximately $137 million annually. However, roughly $129 million of this market is lost to surrounding communities outside Bella Vista. Thus, there's enormous potential for retail and restaurant growth. We know we haven't really had any of that here and of course, we know, we all know we have a major developer here. We can question why they do what they do or why they don't do what they don't do. I don't really know. All I will, all I can say right now is this is one opportunity we have to operate autonomously as a city and mine our own possibilities. Don't know how long it'll take, don't know how far into the future. I do know, like right now, we can buy the asset, build it, we build as we go, improvements to the infrastructure of the system or expansion of the system do not have to take place now or even in the near term. This is a long-term investment. What I would hope is that future city council members, after we are all long gone, will be sitting around the table talking about the big possibilities that this water department allowed them so they can move forward on a retail development, a industrial development or what have you. As far as like startup costs is very minimal after we purchase the department. What would allow us to do is create our own public work department that includes streets, water, sewer. Again, sewer not in this conversation right now. However, I did spend quite a bit of time down at Village Wastewater and having a conversation with people down there to better understand their situation. And it may be a possibility that we could utilize their sewer. Don't know right now. You don't know that if you don't have conversations with them. Initially, we would only need one person part-time, you know, to manage this department. Hypho was managed with one person for 400 customers. This particular water department right now has 84 customers and Centerton is more than willing to help train that person. As far as assets to manage the department, we can probably do that internally with our existing assets. We don't need a lot of inventory. We have to carry some to repair brakes, things like that. If we have anything major, Centerton would contract with us to manage anything that might be major. You know what? I mean, I could go on and on and on about this and the details and get into the weeds. Here's what's happened even since last Monday and before that. I've been out on the street and I've been contacting people and talking to people, key people, that are involved in city utilities, i.e. water sewer, but I've also been talking to residents of Bella Vista that have been involved in the history of Bella Vista and the development of Bella Vista, you know, to get their perspective. So far, I haven't talked to anyone that doesn't think that we should do this, you know? They do understand the long-term opportunity that it may bring to us. And in having these conversations, what's happened is it isn't, my thoughts don't just now center around the water department, but there are a whole myriad of opportunities that might be out there for us and we won't be able to make them happen unless we sit down with a map, start looking at different areas around Bella Vista, understanding what's out there, understanding our existing infrastructure, where that may be able to go and open up opportunities for the future. And one of the things I'm frustrated with is that is not happening. And I do not understand how we could vote tonight and vote to kill this thing without having some of those conversations, especially in light of the fact that now we know we at least have until December. We have something else too to think about. The Mercy Way Bridge, we have put that in a grant, well, grant request for the Walton Family Foundation. We don't have an answer for it yet. I don't know when that's due, but if we come back and find out that they may be willing to help us with our portion of the Mercy Way Bridge expansion, I mean, that's a pretty nice chunk of change right there that we could put forth toward this water department purchase. Larry, I want to let you kind of take some of your thoughts right now because I've got so much here, you know, and I don't want to just like blather on forever.
Let's flush it through me Doug if it's okay with you. Okay?
Okay. Larry?
I guess I would disagree with the mayor's conclusion about the survey. Most of the residents in Bella Vista recognize that the Bella Vista POA provides their water and they don't realize that there are properties in Bella Vista that can't get service because the POA cannot service them, hence the reason for the city wanting to acquire a water utility, opening the door for that advent. So it was a question that was, I guess, without all of the facts, was answered in the fashion to their best knowledge. The reality is, is in the comprehensive plan, there are numerous references in there brought about by the committee, the guiding committee and the public input sessions that said the city needs to promote economic development by making strategic improvement to the public realm. Now, the simple interpretation of that is the city needs to provide public facilities or public works facilities to make developable lands developable that don't have such access for development today. We can look around the city and see Cooper lands, take the Highlands where the arts and crafts fair is. That property has been available for commercial development for probably about 30 years if you go back to when it was planted. It hasn't developed. Well, we don't know why it hasn't developed. It's owned by the developer, but it hasn't developed. It is commercial viable land. The reality is we have a lot of that in Bella Vista that hasn't developed. I'm not being critical to the, about the developer, but we have other land that can't develop that is developable and the owners want to see it developed. We have land along Highway 71. There are lands along 279 that Mr. Kaminsky related to in his comments, specifically stating that Sam's Club is in Bentonville, not in Rogers. And why is that? Because Bentonville could provide the utilities for that development. And having that water system from Hawasi into Bella Vista, which is the portion we're initially proposing to acquire with about 85 customers, puts us in the driver's seat as for development along that whole corridor. We own the water system. We can provide water for the development. And yes, it will potentially run a little deficit in the red initially and a slight adjustment in the rate structure will help minimize that. The reality is it's an investment in our future, a big investment. It makes us a player in the game. Without having a chip in the game, we have no say in the game. If we're not a player, we have no say. If we are a player, we have a lot to say. We have a lot of control. And speaking with the Village Wastewater group, as Doug has done, they will have capacity or more capacity along 279 to extend sewer service. It's not there today, but it's in their plan. So the plan here, the proposal here is to plan for the future of the city, enable development of undevelopable lands by owning a water system and enabling that to occur. And we will have costs down the road, but if you want to get a return, you have to put a buck in the machine to play the game. And so our initial investment is nominal. At best, we have the licensed operators on staff to do this. They lack probably real life experience in operating a system, but they are licensed to meet state requirements. Our investment in this is minimum under $500,000 for the full boat to get us going. It's much less than that if we rely upon the city of Centerton utility for assistance in that startup program. So I would submit that, I don't want to see this to be a boondoggle. This happened in the past. You may remember that the city of Bella Vista wanted to annex the whole land area down through and including Hawasi. It was a boondoggle. It was a black mark on a prior council for their lack of effort, lack of effort to communicate with the residents of what the benefits of being in Bella Vista would be versus being in the county. And after that fell apart because of lack of proper effort, it's a black mark on our face and we have Grabit at our back door. We can change that by being able to provide water for development on those lands, just as Mr. Kaminsky pointed out with the Sam's Club situation. And I would submit that we would be foolish in not taking advantage of implementing this opportunity for the future of Bella Vista.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd like to say something, Peter.
Okay.
You know, I've been on council a little bit over four and a half years and we've been a city since 2007. And that entire time, I've heard how the sky is falling because we don't have enough sales tax dollars. And that entire time, we've had a balanced budget. And in the time I've been on council, we've had a surplus of seven, eight million dollars. And I'm constantly hearing how the sky is falling. We've made the fire department better. We've made the police department better. We've made the streets way better. We've accomplished all kinds of things, but the sky is falling because we don't have enough sales tax dollars. Number one, if the administration is against doing this, I don't think it's a good idea to do it. Second thing is the benefits are extremely speculative. You know, there's some, some of the property is already owned by Cooper and has water, some of the key areas of property. There's places here and there that don't have water, but we'd have to buy this, lose $30,000 every year or more, at least $30,000 every year, and invest all kinds of other money, much more than the cost of buying it, in order to be able to supply people with water. And we have these speculative ideas about how reserved lands out west, which are reserved by Cooper, will be an X bias just because we have a little bit of water. It's highly speculative. Now, as far as what we've accomplished, in 2012, our city taxes were 1.3 million. In 2018, these are actual numbers, it was a little bit, this is just city taxes, not any other income, it's a little bit over 2 million. It increased 60% in six years. That's 10% a year, but the sky is falling. I'm constantly being told the sky is falling. Here's a list of things, this isn't everything, so I apologize to any businesses I left out. This is just off the top of my head, what's happened in the last four and a half years. We annexed a property that, where the Walgreens sits. The CVS was built. The Mercy Medical Clinic and emergency room were built. At the time, first emergency room in the state that wasn't connected with the hospital. Now, some of these may not, and cornerstone pharmacies in there also. Some of these things may not all be taxpaying entities, but they're clearly a big benefit to the city. but they're clearly a big benefit to the city. Java Dudes was started. All the food trucks have been started. Premier Dermatology was started in the vacant bank building on Rudden Road. The Harps is being expanded by 50%. And Town Center East having a facelift. JJ's Restaurant was started. On the west side, El Poblito was started. Rhythm &amp; Q was started. All this last four and a half years. Rhythm &amp; Q was started. The new hall dermatology is being built on 71. There's a new restaurant and a couple stores being built between Walgreens and Cry Light. New restaurant at Lake Point and a new restaurant at Bella Vista Country Club. Those are, you know, part of the POA, but they're sales tax-paying entities that clearly are, Lake Point was closed for several years. Clearly, they're doing way better than they were. There's 40 miles of trails on the east side, as most people know, and we're having another 50 miles built on the west side. There's a new liquor store at Cunningham Corner. Casanos has been greatly expanded. And, you know, a lot of people notice, which I do too, that we don't have a hotel, and that would be nice to get one. But we have quite a few VRBOs, Airbnbs, vacation rentals, all of which are tax-paying. If you added up those rooms, it's way more than the rooms in a hotel. There's hundreds of them in Bella Vista, and they're all tax-paying entities. So, you know, I don't think the sky is falling, and I think this transaction is too speculative. If the administration doesn't want to do it, I don't think we should do it. They're the executive branch, and they're the ones that have to quarterback the team, so to speak.
Thank you. Linda?
I find it interesting that we're concerning about something being too speculative. When you look at, if Cooper had worried about Bella Vista being too speculative, we wouldn't even be here because Bella Vista would not exist. Several years ago, council felt that this was a good way to go with purchasing the water company. I am strongly in favor of it, as are all the people that I have discussed it with, because I don't want to be the person five or six years down the road when we've boxed ourselves into a position where we can't supply water to a particular property where a commercial entity could go in and say, boy, did we shoot ourselves in the foot when we stopped that purchase. I think we need to look towards the future. We have to have a good vision, and purchasing this water company, as the previous council started in motion, is the first step in that direction. Thank you.
Okay, Jim?
Nobody's told me what it's going to cost. Bottom line, Larry just said $500,000, and we've been talking about $1 million and a half just to buy the system, so I don't know where the 500 is. So, you know, that's a different number than I've heard all along.
The cost, the purchase cost is about 300, and then there's about, if you do a full-fledged startup cost for the amenities that the City of Bella Vista would need to fully support the utility, the estimate is $170,000. That's a heavy estimate. You can do it for a lot less than that. With assistance from Centerton, you can do it for a whole lot less than that. There are certain things in addition to the purchase that we will need to do. The $1 million or $2 million or $4 million that's been bandied around has to do with adding infrastructure to do other things. And that's a decision that would be made when and at such time as development, it would be viable, and the expansion of capacity in that system needed to support that growth. What this does is it provides us the insurance policy and the ability to provide service to lands unserviceable by the two water utilities in the city now that have limited service area capability because of their restrictions.
Well, anything I say is going to get beat up real bad. But the bottom line is, we don't have a clue what this is really going to cost us till all these little things kick in. And everybody says could, or should, or may. Nobody's got anything concrete. We don't have anything concrete. We talked about increasing rates. The residential people on the line could be double. The commercial on the line could be up to 50%. Is that fair? If we go ahead and expand the system even initially, we have to bring a new line in from Centerton, at least to Rogers Road, to get enough water, do what we would like to do right off the bat. And then there's no guarantee that we can put anybody on that. It's 279. It doesn't have much commercial on it. There aren't too many people on it. The biggest one is Leisure Hills, and we can't force anybody who's not on the system to get on the system. So there may not be any money there. My biggest concern, and I was for this since the beginning, and in the long run, I'm still for it, except for the fact that nobody's told me what it's going to cost for sure, or even close, and how long we're going to run backwards on this till we get back to even. Because if it's a Cooper piece of ground that we could do commercialize, rest assured, Cooper's going to get water to it, regardless if it's there now, regardless if it's in the POA or not now. If it's a Cooper piece of ground and Cooper sells it, guaranteed, you're going to get water to it. It's got nothing to do with us, or Centerton, or anybody else. So until somebody gives me real-life numbers and can tell me how long it's going to have to hang on, because we barely hanging on to what we have now, we just don't know. And that's where I'm sort of with John on this. Nobody can tell us what it's really going to cost. We have a startup number, but that's just a startup number. Once you get into that, you're going to open a Pandora's Box as far as money running out, just trying to keep it going and improve it to where it's going to be viable for these people to hook up. And if we do get somebody commercially that's west of the Boys and Girls Club, that's all in the city of gravity. We're not going to gain anything from that. Not going to gain anything from that. They're going to build between the Boys and Girls Club and the edge of Hiwasi. That's all gravity. You can build all you want. We don't gain anything from that other than water hookups. None of the exchanges on High 49 are in the city. I heard a couple that are close. So you get water out there, and they build, we're not going to gain from those commercial businesses. And how long is that going to take? An example I use, and I got beat down a couple times from this council, example I use, 30 years ago, 35 years ago, they built the road from Fayetteville to Fort Smith. Lovely road. How much has been developed on that road in all that time? You've got another section of that road that runs through the state line to Joplin. What's been developed along that section of road? Can we afford to wait that long till something pops? I don't think so, with our current income level. Because this isn't going to bring us any money. It's going to be one. And the thing is, how long a while? We don't know. My crystal ball is not that clear.
Steve?
Mayor Christie, this is, I'll be very brief. This is a complex proposition. I do think parts of it are highly speculative. I think the City of Centerton has been gracious as they've offered this proposition and stand by for an answer. They've indicated recently that they seek an answer by December 1st, I believe. There are still questions that are unanswered, that if we can take a little more time and make sure that everybody has the most important questions answered about this proposition, and what the probabilities are, and how long it might take for this to become a break-even proposition first, before it's ever revenue generating or even inspiring additional development. So my sense of it is, as we sit here tonight, that we ought to not back out of the deal tonight, that we don't need to back out of the deal tonight, that we should continue to invest time and answer some of these questions that are still outstanding, and so that we all do complete due diligence and can come to the table without a lot of question marks and make a determination about this in the future.
So you're suggesting we table, is that what I'm hearing?
I am.
Okay. Before we get to it, if you want to go this route, Doug can't do it alone. And Larry, I'm not sure if you're going to be able to stand back far enough, you know, to look at the other arguments, because you've been in it since day one, along with me for the past three years. So I appreciate that. Is there someone else who could step forward, perhaps from the other side, that would also help Doug so that we can get the questions answered, so that when we bring it back, whenever that's going to be, perhaps as far as the November meeting, then we will truly have all the answers covered. And there are still some legal questions as well. Can you run it at a loss, or does it have to be self-sustaining? And the statute says one thing, but some people think, no, you can run it at a loss. We need to get that answer. Okay? So I'd like at least one more person from council police to get involved. Staff doesn't have the bandwidth to be able to do this, and frankly, they don't have the expertise. But Doug can't do it alone. So I would look to other members of council police to help Doug. If you're going to work together, I remind you that if you're going to meet together, you still have to announce it as a public meeting, and maybe that's not a bad thing either. Okay? So you can get some public input as we go along. So what would be your timeframe, Steve?
We should take as much time as we need to get the answers that we need and not hold Centerton up.
Okay, so that would be the November regular meeting?
Mike, again, I don't know what their expectation is. Is their expectation to have a word from us by December about whether we're ready to start, or are they wanting to get this done by December?
No, they'd like to hear it by December if we're ready to start.
Okay.
Okay, that's the way, I sent all of you the email I got from Frank. That's the way I interpret it. Okay?
Mayor Christie, I appreciate very much council member Fowler's efforts to this particular proposition. And his hours are not the only hours. I think there are considerable other hours that the city council has invested to try to wrap our minds around this very, again, complex proposition. So I don't think he's out there by himself. I think the questions that are out there, we need to, we need to collect them, and then we need to find out who can answer them, and I'm happy to help with that.
Okay, fair ball. Thank you. Okay, Linda?
And I've also been starting to do some work from the real estate potential development end of things.
Okay, let's make sure we're all coordinated, okay, so we're not all to the place, because we need to get this tied up with a bow on it one way or the other by the end of November or by the, by the regular November meeting. Okay?
I would suggest, Mayor, that we continue to place it on our work agenda for discussion to...
Yeah, sure, that's not a problem at all. Yeah, no problem.
So is the, is the motion to table? I would just like, I just want to say, so I actually, as I said, there's so much, you know, that's going on, you know, on all the conversations that I've had, to chronologically or in a straight line, kind of like lay them all out. So there's more comments I could make that I, I say, kind of left on the table, but I won't tonight because maybe it'd be for future consideration. But there are a couple things, you know, and because I take a little exception to it, I don't think I heard anyone say that the sky is falling, ever. But let's face it, we have a revenue problem in Bella Vista. What's happened is, we manage a very, very tight budget. There are other headcount positions we could desperately use in Bella Vista, but we just don't fund them, you know. We need additional building inspectors, code enforcement officers. We don't have a planning department at all, which could help with some of this stuff. We had to let, or not had to, but an economic development manager is no longer with us, which could help with some of this research, you know, that we're ended up having to do because we don't have anybody else to do it. And I didn't know that whatever the administration wanted to do, I was just supposed to roll over and do it. I thought we were supposed to do the legwork and the homework to follow up and be sure that everything that we were hearing was, you know, right. And not necessarily that it's not right, but just to, just to do that back, that backup check, you know. I thought that's why we ran for these seats and why we were elected, and I just thought it was part of the responsibility. I will say, too, sales tax, sky's not falling, but just to put it in perspective for everyone, it's been stated several times, 10 cities closest to population of Bella Vista in the state of Arkansas, if you align them at 1%, straight up and down, all the cities charge a different percent of sales and use tax percentage, right? 1%, 1.5%, 2%, 2.5%. But if you equate everybody to 1%, 10 closest cities to us, the two next closest cities are Van Buren at $3.9 million, and Jacksonville at $4 million. Bella Vista generates $2 million. So there's an issue there. Again, are we going to have car dealerships here? Probably not. But there certainly are a myriad of commercial opportunities that would exist for Bella Vista. Just one last thing. So 279 up here, and where we're talking, we're grabbing, comes up and it butts Bella Vista. We already have a streets department there. We're going to build a police department there. There's prime real estate, basically, just right across the street that's in Grabit is definitely a possibility for Bella Vista in the near future, you know. If we run the water, we could require those property owners to purchase water from Bella Vista, you know, or else not supply them with water, just as an FYI. Anybody that looks into this can figure that out. And then we have a state-of-the-art fire department just right down the street, less than a mile, that can provide fire protection. I mean, it's like a kind of a natural area for development in the future, especially as I-49 has developed out there, you know. And the west development right now, current year-to-date, so 2017, the west built 57% of the homes that the east did in number. In 2018, they built 61% of the homes on the west as the east. In 2019, year-to-date, through August, at which we're only like five building permits behind this year versus last year, the west is at 94% of what the east is. Focus is being moved out to the west very quickly, and a question was proposed at the work session last week, well, what is that development, the water department? So I understand what that means for the west. Well, what does it mean for the rest of the residents of Bella Vista? It means more sales and use tax dollars in the future at some point, which all Bella Vistans benefit from. So anyway, the more conversations I have, the more opportunities it looks like are out there. And I appreciate the table on this. I'll work with this on anybody, and I'll spend as much time as is required to try to figure it out and try to have the right conversations with the right people.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the table?
There's, there's not a motion.
Excuse me, okay.
I'm trying to clarify the...
Can you move it?
Okay. I move that we table this resolution until the November meeting.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right.
Ready for a vote? Okay. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Augler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrier, 60.
Okay, moving along to the resolution that is still part of old business. This has been around for a couple of months as well. It's approving change order number one to a contract with Centerpoint Contractors in the amount of $42,948 for construction of additional trail crossings in lieu of tunnels as part of the Bella Vista Trail Expansion Project. For the last two work sessions, we've had representatives of the trails come out and speak to us. For those of you that may not be familiar to it, there were two tunnels that had to be canceled. One in particular because there was buried fiber optic that we didn't know was there in the first place. And it turns out that there's a fiber vault underground, which would cost millions of dollars to move. So they had to make a change, a change order to put it over the road crossing and move it up. So we approved the deduction side of it back in June, and that was $188, sorry, $188,000. And this is $43,000 the other way so that they can now put the, over the road elsewhere. So the net is about $130,000 that the builders need. Remember, this isn't our money. That the builders need to be able to put back in the reserves because their reserves were so tight in the first place because the cost of steel went up. And so there was some concern by... And so there was some concern by some members of council that we needed a better future vision as to what tunnels will be built and what tunnels won't be built. That still remains in question, because everybody is waiting for AT&amp;T to finish their final examination of the grounds, where the tunnels are going to go, to determine if fiber optics are there. Why can't you use the state agency that is supposed to be tracking this? It's because there's fiber in the ground here, including up and down 71, that was buried and never reported. And that's one of the problems we've got. And so we've had, at the last two work sessions, members from the construction company, as well as trailblazers, come in and talk to us about this. I'm hoping everybody on council now feels comfortable with this. We will continue with the work sessions to talk about the trail progress. And I'll be quiet as there are any discussion on... Okay, seeing none?
Mayor Christie, I think I spoke in favor of tabling this one previously, so I'll speak again tonight. I appreciate we've got a kind of a hanging transaction that needs to be closed, the loop needs to be closed here. I still believe that we should be able to get to a single modification of the contract with regard to the number of tunnels. I think that needs to be resolved, and I won't be comfortable supporting any more contract changes that have to do with reduction of tunnels in the future unless we get a commitment that it is the final assessment, that this will be the last time we have to consider a reduction in the number of tunnels. I think that the trailblazers have and should continue to do everything that they can to maintain the tunnels. I believe they're an important aspect of the proposition that was the basis for the grant to the city of Bella Vista, and I think we should be hanging on to those as tightly as we can. And I'm sorry that utilities seem to have taken weeks and weeks and weeks to figure out, and it's still not figured out tonight. And I won't be comfortable with any further changes that have anything to do with a reduction in the number of tunnels unless it is a complete analysis next time it's brought forward.
Okay, thank you. Just to clear it up, the grant from the Walton Family Foundation would have come to us whether or not there are tunnels at all. However, the tunnels, the number of tunnels was always speculative right from the beginning. Unfortunately, there was a mindset put in place because someone decided that they were going to call it 11-under, which would be a nice tribute to your golf game, which is certainly much, much better than mine. But there's also 11 tunnels going under the roads. Because they have counsel two, we've now been informed by trailblazers that the name will probably change, and the one that they're looking at is called Sugar Creek. That's not going to happen anymore?
No, Little Sugar.
Oh, Little Sugar Creek, excuse me, yeah. Because part of the trail, if you haven't been down there, when we had the public walk back in June, it's a very, very pretty part of the trail that goes right along the creek. Okay, thank you, Steve. We have this resolution?
I'm sorry? Motion to approve.
Second? Thank you.
Okay. Call the ball. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrick, 6-0.
Okay, thank you. Moving into new business, the first is an ordinance repealing the entirety of Division Four of Article Two of Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista, Sections 2-105, 2-106, 2-107, 2-108, 2-109, 2-110, 2-11, 2-12, and 2-13, and adopting a new section 2-105 to effectuate the adoption of City Council rules of order and procedure by resolution of the council rather than by ordinance and for other purposes. In plain English, what that means is all our rules that Steve talked about earlier are wrapped up in an ordinance, which is a law, and it's very difficult for us to go and change it. We have to go through three readings, et cetera. What we're proposing to do is move it from being an ordinance, and in the next, in fact, not the next piece of business, but the next one after that, we will then have a resolution moving everything so that our rules of operation as a council are a resolution rather than an ordinance, so as Steve mentioned, if they have to be tweaked in the future, it's a heck of a lot easier for us to do so. Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay.
Motion to approve?
No, not quite. Staff is requesting that we move to third and final reading, so that we can get it to kick in faster, Steve.
There used to be a motion to suspend the rules.
So we need a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Okay, Linda, you want a second?
Sure.
Any discussion on that? Okay, so you're voting on a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, excuse me. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrick, 6-0.
Okay, now we'll read it, and this will be the third and final. An ordinance repealing the entirety of Division Four of Article Two of Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista, Sections 2-105, 2-106, 2-107, 2-108, 2-109, 2-110, 2-111, 2-112, and 2-113, and adopting a new section 2-105 to effectuate the adoption of the City Council rules of order and procedure by resolution of the City Council rather than by ordinance and for other purposes. Is there any further discussion? They may have a motion to approve this ordinance.
So I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Any final thoughts? All right, wait.
Okay. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrick, 6-0.
Thank you. There's one more ordinance under new business that's waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of street salt and sand based on price and availability by informal price quotes through March of 2020. This is an ordinance that we pass every year as a city. It gives Superintendent Button at the Streets Department much more flexibility. Sand and salt is almost like a spot market, and you have to watch the prices continually. We are not big enough to command a low price on the long term, so we have to be able to react quickly when the price comes right and he has the ability to purchase. Somebody did mention, why don't we team up with other cities? We tried that about four years ago, and the other cities declined. Everybody wants to do it on their own, apparently. So as I mentioned, this is something that we do every year, just to give flexibility back to the Street Department. Is there any discussion? Okay? I entertain a motion.
Motion to suspend the rules and go to final reading.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, you're voting on a motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrick, 6-0.
Okay, thank you. Now we go into the resolutions under new business. The first is readopting the rules of order and procedure of the Bella Vista City Council. I'm sorry, no, we have to go back and do the...
You need to read it a third time.
Okay. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of street salt and sand based on price and availability by informal price quotes through March 2020. Is there any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Okay, here we go.
Okay. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrick, 6-0.
Thank you. Now we'll go to the resolution, readopting the rules of order and procedure of the Bella Vista City Council. So this is moving what was the ordinance that we passed a few minutes ago now into a resolution, so that we can react much quicker if we wish to tweak it. Is there any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All right. Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carrick, 6-0.
Okay, the next resolution is approving an unmanned aircraft system policy for the Police Department, otherwise known as a drone. We did not have a policy. We need to put one in place. We have now purchased a drone, and we have had two people qualified through the FAA. The chief has brought this to us this evening. It's a policy that was put together by the Arkansas Chief of Police Association, and was blessed by their Legal Liability and Risk Management Institute. It protects the privacy of citizens when the drone is in use, and it also requires the proper training to be put in place to comply with the FAA. Any discussion at all?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
The only comment is, it seems awfully comprehensive and lengthy, but it does cover a lot of the territory.
Well, when you're doing something like a drone, and it's up in the sky looking down, you want to make sure it's very comprehensive and tight. Thank you.
Okay, call the ball. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrick, 6-0.
Thank you. The next resolution is authorizing the sale of three surplus city vehicles currently used by the Street Department at public auction pursuant to Bella Vista City Code, Section 2-345. Superintendent Button has submitted his memorandum, which is in your package. There are three vehicles, two dump trucks and a water truck. They're fairly old. We have approached the POA to team up with them on their auctions, so that we're not doing separate ones, and their board of directors has kindly agreed to allow us to come together on this particular sale. Are there any questions at all? Discussion? Entertained a motion to approve.
John? Second.
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Carrick, 6-0.
Thank you. The final resolution of the evening is a resolution stating the City Council's intent to move ahead and support the construction of certain capital improvement projects through the issuance of bonds secured by an additional 1% sales and use tax in the city of Bella Vista to be approved by the voters at an election in 2020. So what this is doing is the council, if they approve it this evening, is instructing the administration to move forward with our municipal financial advisor towards a date probably in November, possibly December, where two ordinances will need to be approved by council. One is to call the election, and one is to approve the actual verbiage of the question itself. The thought here is, we don't want to get all the way down, and somebody says, no, we'd rather you flinch now, so that if you have an objection to this, this is the time to bring it up, so that we're not going to go down the road and spend some more money and spend an awful lot of time. For those of you that aren't aware of this, some of us have been talking about it in speeches and whatnot for some time. We desperately need a police station. We do not have a police station today. It is an old building of the POA that was used for offices. We have grown substantially from 22 sworn to 34 now, chief. And we recognize that we're going to have to grow some more because of the new housing that Doug mentioned earlier. There is no room left at the inn. It is full. And what we're doing is offering tours to people who may want to go through it, so you can better understand. We will have lots of information sessions the further we get down the road. We will have drawings of this, in fact, the drawings of the Police Department and the initial floor layout are now. If you would like to see them, Chief Graves is back there, and he'd be more than happy to take you through the building as well. Chief Sims has identified that Fire Station Number Three on Glasgow is no longer going to support the growth that we're seeing out there. Again, as Doug had mentioned, there's more and more West Side growth. So what we have done is we have purchased three acres from Cooper roughly across the street on the corner of Glasgow and Emperor, and that would be the new home of Fire Station Number Three. Finally, the dream, I guess, of Chief Sims and I has always been to have the ISO rating for the city to be at a three. When I first came in as mayor, it was six, two years ago, because of the expenditures that we had made in the new Fire Station Number Four, ISO came in and dropped it to a four. For the most part, that saves you money on your fire insurance. Connie and I saved $124 with our insurance company. What we are being told is, if you thought that was good, wait till you drop from a four to a three. The way to get there is to improve Fire Station Number Three and to build a fire training tower with a training facility at its base. We have acquired land on a 25-year license for a dollar a year from the POA for this building and the tower. Again, not only because of the ISO rating, but today if we have to send firefighters down or over for any kind of tower training, they have to go to Springdale. In the event of a fire, time is of the essence. Every second counts. And what happens if our ladder truck and six or seven of the fellows are down there, and suddenly we're understaffed? If they're here and they're on the training tower, they immediately drop everything, and then they can move. The plan is also to have a training facility there, a building, which would also have fire equipment in it, so that if they're there and they have to grab equipment and go very quickly, they're on their way. We have also determined that we do not need to hire more people to do this, and we do not need to buy more trucks and other equipment. We can do it with what we have. And I failed to mention that residents have also been asking for an ambulance for Fire Station Number Three. Today, it is serviced out of Number Four. So in a nutshell, that's where we're going with this. The cost, at this point, it looks to be about 20 million. It's 14 million for the police and the courts. This facility here will move over to the new building. The new Fire Station is approximately 2 million. The tower with the training facility is roughly 2 million, and then we said we better have 2 million for contingency, based on our experience when we built the Street Department and when we built the Fire Station Number Four. If we move forward and council approves the ordinances towards the end of the year, the citizens of Bella Vista will have an opportunity to vote on this at the March 3 primary, and you will get an opportunity to vote on the police and the fire separately. So you may not want one, but you want the other, and that's the responsible way to do it, so that you can look at it and make your decision. If the bond is approved, then we move forward. You don't start to pay until you actually draw and use the money, and there's no way that we're going to pull it all at once.
Could you clarify that?
If...
The sales tax, sales tax would start when it was approved.
That's right, and the sales tax doesn't come to the city. That's where I'm going next.
Oh.
Okay, the sales tax, if you remember when Daniel was here at the work session, he explained this. The city does not see a penny of the sales tax. It goes to a third party that holds it, and they start to pay off the bond. And that prevents any funds coming in here that we could suddenly say, you know, we're not going to do the Fire Department, we're going to go over and do it there. It's not going to happen. If there is any money left over, it immediately goes back into payment of the bond. Daniel, who's our Raymond James advisor, believes it can be paid in 10 years. We will do everything in our power to ensure that it is paid off properly and promptly. But we need to be able to get ready for the growth that we're seeing. We have to manage the growth. We can't let the growth manage us. So there's my pitch. A long pitch, I'm sorry. But it's very involved, and as I mentioned... But it's very involved, and as I mentioned, you're going to have an opportunity to attend public sessions to give us your input. And if you want to get a head start of it and go through the current police station or through Fire Station Number 3, then please contact the chiefs, and they'll be more than happy to help you out. All right. Is there discussion on this? Because I know we may have a change on the wording. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention Chief Graves was kind enough to give me a tour of the existing 7,000-square-foot facility. And to say it's inadequate is an understatement. It's really shockingly inadequate. People are jammed in, they're in closets, and it's just, they clearly need something new. And my second thought is, I'm not a big fan of increasing people's taxes, but this is my favorite way to increase people's taxes because the people decide. The people vote on whether their taxes will be increased or not. And I think that's the way to do it. So that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, John. Anybody else?
No, just like I say, kind of echo some of what John said. I'm fully supportive of a police department that sorely needed. I encourage everyone to go take a tour of that department. Not only is it small and cramped, but it is just old and way past its use, way past its use. I've also visited Fire Department Number 3, I don't know, three or four times. Three. And certainly, we need a new facility there as well, and of course, the increased capacity that Peter alluded to. And fire training facility, I think that'd be a great thing for Bella Vista. And I want to put a little bit of some additional perspective. We're at 1% in Bella Vista, I already mentioned that. So the 10 cities that I did this comparison to, the sales and use tax collected, of those 10 cities, there were two of them that are 1.5%. Four of them are at 2%, and two of them are at 2.5%, and there actually was one that was at 0.75%. So, and Bentonville is at 2%, Rogers is, I believe, 2%. And I'm not putting that out there just as rationale for why we need to do it because everybody else is as well. That's not really it, but, you know, it's necessary in order to accomplish the police, the fire, and their needs. The only thing I would say about it is, you know, if we did have that commercial development here, maybe we maybe wouldn't have to be doing this, especially with a city of our size. And hopefully, you know, looking into the future, if we can do a little bit more and increase that commercial tax base, it will keep us from facing a boat like this, you know, a similar one to support whatever additional infrastructure we may need at the time to meet our city's growth.
Okay.
Mayor Christie, if I may. Also, not keen on the idea of raising our sales tax. Sales tax in Arkansas are very high. They're the highest in the nation across the state. I don't like looking around at other municipalities nearby to us and saying, hey, they're 1% higher, maybe we should go there, too. So I want to take that part out, and I don't think tonight's the night where any of us need to close the deal on any of the individual projects. We're needing to take time over the next several months to do right by our citizens so that they have the right information to make good choices for themselves. But I agree with Councilmember Flynn. This council is not capable of raising the sales tax. This is a voter referendum, and what I've proposed is a little different wording than the first draft of this resolution. In the newspaper business, they call burying, don't bury the lead. And I felt like we buried the lead a little bit here. I just want to bring it to the forefront, and that is, this is a referendum for voters to decide. We can provide information, and then voters will speak for themselves. It's tough to get a sales tax increase. I think we have worthy projects. We'll have time to explain those in greater detail. These are matters of public safety to Bella Vista, something that we all hold near and dear. So I think they merit consideration by our voters. It'll be up to the voters to determine whether this goes through.
Okay, thank you. All right. Every one of you should have a copy of a revision. The end result is the same, but to Steve's point, what he's done is he put the word referendum in the forefront. Does anybody have any comments between the two?
I like the revised version that clearly states the issue for the electorate to consider and for ourselves.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, I agree.
Okay. In the essence of time, then.
There needs to be a motion to amend.
A motion to amend.
Right. To the current, to the suggested wording.
I move to amend the original proposed resolution to...
The suggested wording?
To the suggested wording I've offered tonight.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any last minutes?
Vote on the amendment, and then you vote again on the final.
So we're voting on the amendment.
All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrick, 6-0.
Okay, so the amended resolution reads as follows. The City Council intends to move ahead and support a referendum to be considered by the voters at an election in 2020 for an additional 1% sales and use tax in the city of Bella Vista that would be used to secure bonds for the construction of certain capital improvement projects. Is there any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I would like some clarification as to what point we would have input into the inclusion of these items and the scope thereof.
There will be bond council, who will be retained in some of the preliminary things that we do. You will have the ordinance enacting 1% subject to voter approval and referendum, and then also all the valid questions, and that's where you're going to be able to decide what you want to put on there and what you don't.
Thank you.
We should see the ordinances maybe next month, by October for sure. And we're not going to do a third and final, and we're going to go through all three months.
We will not be able to have those ordinances next month.
Okay, so it'll be October. Okay?
We have to procure bond council first, and that'll take a month.
Okay, anybody wish to say anything else? Okay.
Motion to approve.
I want to make, I need to advise you real quick. I need to make sure everyone understands this resolution doesn't legally do anything. It is a statement of your intent and of what you intend to do in the future, and just so that unless there's any question by anybody. This is just saying what you intend to do in the future. This doesn't do it. This does not mean it's going to happen yet. So just to make sure.
It puts a ball in motion to a table of two.
Got a motion by Wise. Is there a second?
Second.
Final, let's go for it. Okay?
Can I just say one thing?
Yep.
This is very brief. I would just like to say, you know, I think Mayor Christie and I, we may disagree on this one situation with the Water Department, but I will say, I just want people to know, he does manage our city budget very effectively. He manages your dollars. The very close lady does a very good job with it. You know, do I think that there's room to do this water purchase? I do. Does he think we need to back out? He does. We agree to disagree, whatever. I don't know where it's going to end up. But I don't want people to think that, you know, there's something to skew there. It's not. He does a very good job with your money. So, and if there was any other way that we could procure police, fire, et cetera, we would, but really, this is probably our best bet.
Thank you, Doug. Please.
Okay.